Yes. If we could please stand and begin our meeting with the flag of allegiance, please.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all the attendants for the last council meeting of the year. Welcome. All council members are present in accounted for. We're going to begin by approval of the minutes from our November meeting, which is November 12th. So all council have a chance to receive those minutes and review those. Any additions, corrections, or changes to those minutes?
I see no corrections, so I approve or I motion to approve those minutes for November.
I'll say.
Okay, motion by Pam and second by Dwayne. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign? All right, I'm going to send around that printed copy. I'll start it this way so we can get those signed and approved for approval. Devin, we're putting you on the spot. You just got here, but you're technically first on the agenda.
Awesome. I'm only going to take two minutes.
Public defender chief of.
All right, well, thank you for getting me on the agenda. I showed up to this meeting on time and in the right place. So this is an inadvertent from the commissioners' meeting that I missed. I just wanted to give a quick update. I know Heather and I talk a lot about the PD board. I try not to bother you all, and I'm still not going to be asking for a change in the budget or anything, but there is some changes that we're doing with the public defender office. My position is going to be changing to a full-time, quote-unquote, 1.0 caseload, which is a full-time position regarding caseload assignments. Right now, I'm at like a half a contract with the way cases have been going and the lack of attorneys in Indiana and southern Indiana especially. With where I'm at with the number of cases I've been accepting recently, we just have to make the change. I also think it's going to allow me to focus more on the office and finding more ways to improve it. So really, I'm just giving you all an update that that position is changing. It's not going to change the budget for that department at all. And then there's going to be an assistant position that's going to be added to that office position also, which will just continue to help efficiency within the office. So again, all within the same budget. All of those things are reimbursed at the 40% level that it was before. I've been working with Heather and everyone, trying to figure out how to do that the most efficient way possible, but hopefully we'll know more at the end of the first quarter and hopefully we'll see some improvements. But I don't want to take any time. I just didn't want you to be blindsided by that and not have heard from me at all. So if you have questions, comments, concerns, you can always call me on my cell or on our office or any other reason.
Any questions for Devin? The public defender board is probably serving that, and we're obviously well aware of all the changes. And we're really proud that our county is part of that reimbursable opportunity. Some counties chose not to be, and we are getting our full advantage back. And countless cases in this county need a public defender. So a lot of dollars coming out of this county, but lucky that we're meeting deadlines and staying within our case requirements so that we can reach our full reimbursement back from the state for PDs assigned.
One thing I was going to add to that is there was a misdemeanor pilot program around the state of Indiana. Currently, counties are not being reimbursed for misdemeanor caseload assignments, which in our county is a large amount of the cases, frankly. There's a, they were put out a request, the state did it, for a request for consideration in that pilot. I submitted our application. Judge Good helped me a lot with that and getting the information and the data to submit to that. If we get approved for that pilot program, we would get 40% of our misdemeanor costs reimbursed also, which depending on the quarter, could be between $25,000 and $30,000 a quarter. So hopefully, you know, guys, any contacts in Indianapolis, maybe they'll try it out. But that'd be a big thing for accounting, too, just because of the types of cases they have.
Anticipate hearing back, whether that's a perk or not.
I would say in the next couple of weeks, honestly, just because I think the way that they asked us to submit timelines, it started with next year. They asked for proposals and what programs we could do. And I've submitted stuff for 2025, so hopefully soon. Originally, they had not put out for a request for consideration for that, but I think somebody complained enough that they asked for different pilot counties. I'll let you know, obviously.
Devin, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Breymer. Guys, have a good night.
You as well. We're going to skip over. We know we have some guests here representing our Rikers Ridge sewer project, but we're going to wait until Commissioner Breymer walks in the door. So we technically, next on our agenda, have an update and a budget request change from auditor Heather Puff, as well as Tabitha Evelyn, our clerk. I'm not sure if Tabitha's also she's there.
She is. She's here.
She is present, and I know council members received email with information regarding these proposed changes. So go ahead and share those important highlights with us, Deborah.
So I have lost two people in the past year, in the past month, actually. One I hired in October of last year, the other one I hired in January of this year. One left, one I hired in January left November 9th. My other one left last week, all to go to higher-paying positions. As I showed you, the city clerk's office paid a significant amount more than what we could pay. So as you all know, I took over voter registration at the end of 2023. So I put on the presidential election this year, so I know I can eliminate that position. So I'm asking to take one of my open and divide it up and pay my girls more. I think it's important to know that the entire salary is not divided up amongst the staff. That we're still providing a savings to the county. I am doing something similar, proposing something similar. I was in a position where I had to do with less because of an injury. And then with the technology changes that we've made in our office since I became auditor, it's now available that we could do this work less a person and then increase the pay and get a small part-time budget. But it would still be a savings. My savings alone would be $35,788 to the county general budget. And Tabitha had a savings of, I think it's 14,000?
Sorry.
Yeah, 13,467.
I know, I appreciate the, obviously, all this, I've been outlined already, communication that we receive. It's one thing, sometimes apples to oranges in comparison, knowing we may lose staff to a factory setting or, you know, another degree earned and an advancement in a career. But in this case, it's not hundreds. It is 10-plus thousand dollars to other municipalities, looking at Hannover and the city Madison salaries, far, far beyond what we are currently paying. So I appreciate their effort as far as just efficiency, knowing the cost to the county as far as turnover and keeping and retaining quality positions. We're not always able to just bump up salaries anytime we want, but the fact that they feel like they can go lean and do the work when one less position. I'm anxious to hear what other thoughts council has and what they've given us.
I had the privilege to speak with Senator Randy Maxwell last night, and he was actually discussing this topic with me. It's happening across the board. People are becoming more creative in these types of situations like you are doing, where they're managing their own offices and where they're having individuals that are leaving the offices for other higher-paying salary jobs. And they're taking and absorbing those positions and dividing the salaries amongst, just trying to retain the employees that they have left that have been in the offices and doing good jobs and trying to retain those staff members. So he's seeing it across the footprint and just was wondering if we had been seeing the same thing. So it was kind of odd that that conversation came up last night and...
So at conference, which I've had this feeling that this could be a possibility for maybe the past six months. I know that Dearborn, Decatur County, has recently done this type of change. And it's because they knew they were going to have an opening, and they couldn't attract a quality employee with what they had been making previously. So they had to do this. And I think this is something that just improves county, our county jobs for years to come. I'm done in two years. So, I mean, I want to keep my staff. So the next clerk comes in with an already trained. All they have to do is sit back and just learn. So, I mean, that's important for my position.
Absolutely. I hadn't done the research or even thought before now to ask you in regards to the additional dues that you took on during the election process and just thought, I'm just going to do this done myself. How common is that for other counties as far as feasibility?
It's feeling more toward it.
Okay, so it's common for a clerk to just handle that himself?
Several clerks have lost voter registration deputies, and they've put in a spot of happening to finish an election or right in the middle of something. And so I think we're all learning. It's easier just to handle it yourself. And then I have, if you've seen on my sheet, I have one person that is my, that helps me. If I'm not there, she knows it. So I just mainly did the behind-the-scenes of putting on the election, so.
I know we got an explanation from both, but just specifically and what that proposed, the sort of proposed changes would be. What are the questions from the council that we have for Heather or Tabitha? Concerns?
I appreciate the creativity and trying to, trying to build a good solid foundation there, you know, for the transition for you in two years, because it's very important that we'll be able to make that seamless transition and not, you know, bring a new department head in with
Only staff.
Untrained staff.
Yeah, I'm sure the judges would appreciate it as well.
Absolutely. And obviously, we all know, one item on our agenda tonight, our salary ordinance for 2025 has to be approved this evening, by the end of the calendar year. Obviously, these proposed changes would not be in that printed-in advertised salary ordinance, so we would need to make those changes then. First thing potentially at our January meeting, which of course we call early, and in the month.
I'm okay with it as long as you two girls are confident that your department is, is going to be okay.
I've been clerked for eight and a half years. I think I went through it all, and I can tell you, I'm very confident that the next clerk will be fine if they keep the, if it can keep the staff. They know what they're doing, that job runs seamlessly with them.
Okay, all right.
Right, that's, so I have not been there for eight and a half, but I have worked in the office for a long time. And with the technology changes, and like I said, this year, we were in an unfortunate situation where I had to go several months with one person out and then another person taking a lot of time off. Two people gone, we were having headaches, we were pulling our hair out. One person gone, we were able to manage, and we found new ways of doing things. So if anything, I think it helps further cross-train my staff so that it closed gaps that we probably had before, where it was so segregated. And now everyone kind of knows a portion of everyone's job. That would be mine, mine's all cross-trained, they can all do each other's job, so.
This seems like a win-win. You get to keep the quality employees, the people that have experience and training. They get a bump in pay, and the county still saves money, you know? So that seems like a win-win to me.
Should somebody leave, you have a better salary to attract a new person. So do we need a motion on this, or does it need to be advertised? What's our situation?
So it's within our already advertised budget and state-approved budget. So we just need a motion, a blessing from the council essentially, that we can make this change.
I'll do that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
A motion that would follow both recommendations from Tabitha and Heather that we've received with the pay increase and still keeping it below the budget amount.
Okay, motion from Ray, as part of a second motion.
A second.
Okay, from Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign? And then we will make that adjustment to the salary ordinance. We'll go ahead and make that possible, approval tonight. And then we'll look to make that change in January for formality.
On behalf of my staff.
Yes, mine too.
They are very appreciative.
Our persons.
Yeah, well, and I, you know, for me too, I think I look at it as a challenge, but a caution. We all are well aware, there may be other departments that think, hmm, hey, we're able to do that, maybe that's something we can too. And I know you referenced this, really, just like our homes, trying to pay bills with efficiency, getting creative, trying to learn to be lean when needed, but make sure needs are met. I would certainly challenge other department directors to do the same and not, you know, keep any unnecessary fluff in their budget. And if they're dealing with some significant staffing issues, as you have, you know, then that could be a potential option to look at. I'll let it be noted, obviously, these changes are not taking place and will not approve across every department and the entire county, but in these two specific areas, the auditor and the clerk's office. So I think that's important to note. And we're blessed that we were able to add a little increase for everybody for 2025. Don't want to look at the outcome, but everyone's salary is growing yet again for 2025. But we're glad that we can make this work for those departments. Dave Breymer, please, man. Hey, Dave, we're not putting you on the spot. We just wanted to give our Rikers Ridge friends a chance. Next on the agenda, and we thought, just in case there were any questions that may need to be directed to you, we have some representatives regarding Rikers Ridge sewer who were at the commissioners' meeting, making the request. Mr. Kelly, are you our spokesperson? Mr. Charlie, Mr. Cheatham. I just said the wrong name for the second time today.
I don't think it's very nice to insult Paul Kelly like that.
Actually, I wasn't even Paul Kelly. I could totally see where you, my lip a little bit away. It was a different Kelly I had in my brain. Mr. Cheatham, I'm so sorry.
I think I heard that. When I taught at junior high, I was Mr. Chisholm more than I was Mr. Cheatham.
Chisholm? I was, Cheatham is correct.
I had a nickel every time somebody told me that. I could have retired a lot earlier. But I did attend the November 21st commissioners' meeting to request money for Rikers Ridge Sewer Department. We had a study done by Midwest engineers, and they estimated if we did everything we felt like we should do and need to do, it'd be four and a half million dollars. And looking at the funding sources, we decided that that wasn't going to be possible. Too much of a rate increase to pass on. So we pared it down to about 2.4 million and looked at different funding sources. And one of them is, is the OCRIP. Guess it's a
CBG grant.
It's a grant.
For wastewater.
These ladies know a whole lot more about it than I do on getting the grants.
Or the support system.
Yes, that's right. So, but in order to apply for that, we need to have a match in place of at least 187,000. But we requested from commissioners, 500,000. They're thinking maybe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, David.
I'll let you know if you do.
Yeah. Between 250 and 300 might be available.
Sure.
Any grants coming my way? So that's what I'm here to request, that, I guess, whatever the commissioners
Will approve whatever we all design.
Yeah. We could certainly use that money to do the projects that we need to, not only improve, but I guess just kind of keep pace with what we need to do. We've got, we've got a lift station that needs immediate repair. So that's my request.
And timing of your proposed grant. I apologize, not OCRIP, but the CBG, what does that stand for?
Community Development Block Grant.
The block grant, okay, it says DG, sorry. So it may just be a typo there.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have deemed it. Timing of that, you would know?
We will be, we will be submitting the application. The proposal will be due, I believe it's in April or May. They haven't released their 2025 calendar yet. And then the actual application would be due in June or July. And then award announcements would be made in probably like August, September, somewhere in there. So it's still a little ways away, but obviously, we, in order for us to be able to apply to them, we have to have the matching dollars committed. And we were actually intending to apply in December, but we applied to Ready, didn't get funds from them. We applied to SRF, the State Revolving Loan Fund, to try to get the lower interest rate. We didn't get that. So we're going back to the State Revolving Loan Fund to look at a higher interest rate to help make up for the balance of what the grants and the amount the county can give to us to do the loan and finish the project.
Do you have to do any surveys or that type of things?
Surveys, like?
With the customers of that area or residents?
So we are, we conducted two public forums to get input from the customers to hear what their problems are to help support the OCRIP application. And then we did have to do an income survey of the service area to make sure that they would qualify. They had to have at least 51% of the residents be low to moderate income, and they just barely meet that requirement with the income survey. So that tells us that we can apply then to
That was what I was
Community Development Block Grant.
Over there.
Yes, yeah. Based on the census data, you were just like, it was like 48%. And so, you know, there's only 400 and some customers in the Jefferson, in the Rikers Ridge district, but that census was like 3,000 or 4,000 people. So we made the argument to the state that you should allow us to do an income survey of this area, and so they did. And we, I forget, I think we came in at like 53% or something like that, so. Good question.
Other questions we have for, maybe for Dave, of representatives from the Rikers Ridge Sewer Board?
Available.
Well, we are looking at one other. Possibly. I'm meeting with DHS with Indiana Department of Land Security that Commissioner Breymer and Brian actually gave us a heads up about. So it's possible, I'm, it's, they're very vague, however, on the information that they provide on the website. So far, it looks like it's kind of promising. From what I've, the information I've gathered from that team so far is that the project, in his mind, he believes it would be eligible for those federal funds. However, there are some concerns. And I'm meeting with him again, and he's going to bring his supervisor in to answer the questions he wasn't able to answer when we first met. But there's just concerns around the timeline. If it's going to conflict with the OCRIP grant or if it'll complement it. If we do, you know, whatever match funds are put up, if they're allowed to be used for both or for one, or, yeah, there's just a few questions. But there is another possible. We're constantly searching for others. Yes, definitely.
This situation.
I bet. We will, we will find out more hopefully before the end of the year. But I will definitely be guys updated on that.
Thank you.
For sure.
I have to give you such cures. I don't think the average customer obviously knows what their sewer board does and or has to do in funding that has to be secured to keep rates from increasing more. Just, yeah, I think you just take for granted that
It's there.
Yeah, but I, such kiddos.
And we will be hosting more public forums after the first of the year for the OCRIP application to give more chances or opportunities for people input. And we'll have a better idea of what the rate increase will be and all that, too, so.
So like 400 customers, is that right?
There's 432, I believe.
How many pump stations do you have?
Every house has a pump station.
Well, sure.
I mean, according to the grinder, other than just a handful, I think, close to the old century tube, this is now a new core, those are gravity fed. But every house has a grinder pump. And then we have four major lift stations that help convey it. And once we get it around the ridge, it starts, like I said, over, and my, the Persian 3 is 400 north, they're behind the hospital. That's the third group. But we go around the hilltop or around Fort Rikers Ridge toward Telegraph Hill. The whole idea is to move it around that way, not come over the hill. You don't need a pump to take it over the hill. So we're pretty much, once we get it around by the schools and around, it's pretty much a natural flow. But the main pump station that we're looking at is on Crossroad, and it's a major component of the whole system, really. And that's the one that really needs the most work. So we're looking at a pretty much a total overhaul of that station.
And that's within the roughly 2.5 lean compared to the original project cost, with the suggested 4.5 million?
Yeah.
And the commissioners voted to approve? Or did, was there anything, is it formality as far as the potential matching funding? I know you made a, the, please, so speaking first and then?
We took the information, but we're trying to figure out what is available because of some other things that we've talked about as far as what we, what we could support. So, but we didn't, we had talked, initially, it was 150,000, and then we've gone back and we've been able, we think we can do a little bit more. But still, you know, we need to, the modification of the old jail for juvenile facility. We were hoping to get some information today. I guess we did, but we didn't get the information we needed. We have taken a contractor around and was with us on this visit, so we're going to ask him, okay, you know what we need to do? What's, what would be a ballpark cost to do these things? The guy gave us all the regulations that we had to meet, which is nice, but what are the things that we would have to do? And, but he was there, so I think the contractor can give us a pretty good idea. We can get that fairly quickly. And so that would kind of determine how much was remaining, because I think that is one thing that we need to get going. When we met with him, we figured, looking at the particular cells, we could get eight male and eight female set up fairly, fairly easily. Some modifications still needed, but could get it to work. So that was kind of, and this particular individual is a contractor who runs juvenile facilities, and the state likes him, that's how we got his name. So it's funny, at the end of the meeting, he said, are you looking for someone to run this? Yeah, well, that's why you're here. Anyway, but, so, but he knew what he was talking about. He's got all the regulations down pat. So, but we do need that number to see what it would be. Most of it was no bunk beds. So all the bunk beds will have to be changed, so cut off the top bunk for those cells. Only have one in the cell. And then probably some additional cameras would be needed. Like a wall or two for some privacy concerns around showers. And a little bit of updating in the control.
I don't know, on that line, we got the email stating they're paying now for Dearborn? No? Juvenile placement, the pre-Dearborn?
Um, I can't think of it.
Maybe Decatur County. What we are paying for juvenile placement is increasing at the end of the day. What it costs to us for 2025.
Yeah, I think we're still going west, too.
Dearborn County, it was shared with us that they will be increasing, trying to get it pulled up. The current rate is $150 a day for a juvenile offender, and it will be $175 a day, as where direct file stays will be increased from $300 a day to 350.
I'm actually asking for contribution for any counseling that could be provided as well, would that be at the expense of the county sending the juvenile?
Right.
As well. And we know, we all have seen it in our tenure a couple of different times, that we had to dismount and had to come back and ask for additional appropriate dollars for juvenile placement at a pretty big expense for this county. Not that our intention when we built that jail was for it to be a juvenile center. Nobody wanted that, that's for certain. But I know that's been a discussion, because unfortunately, it's needed. Any additional questions regarding Rikers Ridge and helpful support for this needed project? Well, I guess we'll kind of wait to see, obviously, trying to finalize by the end of the year.
I mean, we should know, maybe sometime next week, how much this I mean, we should know, maybe sometime next week, how much this is juvenile facility, how much that would cost and that'll, Heather's got everything else coming down.
Yeah, with these ARCA funds and contracts have to be placed by
Contracts, which they'll have to accept contracts at their last meeting in December to secure the final dollars, but I have it down, too.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you for coming tonight.
No obligation to stay for the rest of the meeting. We do, yeah, a lot of work. We do have next on the agenda, fire department discussion. Obviously they have, I mean, public safety tax dollars giving us a little more funding to support our fire departments. I think Heather's going to give maybe a kind of a brief, brief explanation to, to help explain where those, those dollars are coming from and how we came up with distribution of those, you know, some options we looked at.
So this is what we came up with for 2024 is what, and this is not set, we have not adopted anything, but this is how it's going to be for the rest of eternity. I think this kind of sent shockwaves through everyone that this is how it's going to be forever, but that's not the case. So when we chose not to follow the new statute that was available, that we could have allocated 5% of fire funding on top, so that would have been 5% of every, all of the public safety revenue that came in. So 5% of the county's share would go there, 5% of the city, the town of Hanover, the town of Brooksburg, the town of DuPont. We chose not to do that because the state would then allocate the money out only by assessed value, not including land. So we felt like it wouldn't be distributed amongst the county as a whole. So in doing research further, I have found that only one unit actually followed that suggestion and that one unit is trying to get legislation to change it because it didn't quite work the way that they thought it would. So I think we did the right thing at the time. So then we also elected to increase our public safety by a small, it was a very small amount, hoping that we would have some extra within our public safety amount that we could distribute out to fire departments. So this year, what we did, and we were hoping to get something out in that it might be very small the first year, we looked at 5% of the county's allocation. So the county's 5% is roughly $102,000 of what we receive over a year's time. So since then, I've done further research with the LGF. Since we are allocating this money out of our share, next year, we can choose to increase it if we so choose and then choose a different way of getting that money out. It would be my recommendation to slowly increase it since we still are not 100% knowing what the jail expenses will be and what our EMS future is. But to slowly do that and possibly do another study, including all fire departments and their current budgets and their current call logs.
Yeah, call log.
So I did, for this year, we modeled our distribution off of the same model that we use for the ARCA distribution in 2022. So we would be distributing $102,600 and it would be distributed to the following fire departments. Madison Township, $14,500, Rikers Ridge, $13,300, Deputy, $12,400, Hanover, $11,600, DuPont Lancaster Township in the amount of $10,800, Cannon, $10,000, Kent, $9,100, Milton Township, $8,300, Western Fires Number Three, $2,100, Cliffy Six, $2,100, Walnut Street Number Fours, $2,100, Fair Play Number One, $2,100, Washington Number Two, $2,100, and North Madison Fire Company, $2,100.
You know, for the call study that was done, that was suggested to repeat that even potentially every three years. So noting that the timing of that, which was the matrix used then for this distribution, it really falls in line with us kind of going this option for 2025 and most likely even after this next year, that this body could certainly look to increase the, the amount given and/or at that time, really next year would be a great time to repeat that, that call, call, call log and kind of take a look then.
I would recommend doing it next year. I've had several fire departments reach out to the auditor's office concerned that the matrix, especially for the volunteer fire departments within the city, might be not fairly recent, or representing. And I think everyone should also know that all units, because we did not put everyone's 5% in, involuntary to everyone, they all still have that 5% in their own public safety that they could also be giving towards fire departments. I'm not sure if other units are doing that or utilizing it. I know I looked at the amount that, say, the town of Brooksburg gets, I think it's $400 per month. So I would say that would be a fairly small amount that they would be able to give if they did 5% of theirs, but
Hanovers is a good example.
But Hanovers would be a good example that Hanover or the city, either of those units probably have some extra in their public safety that they could also be distributing to these fire departments. Another concern that people have maybe questioned is that we would be paying, there is a rule in the statute that I'm not to pay public safety funds to any unit that also receives public safety funds. We do not have a city or town owned fire department within Jefferson County. They're all volunteer units that might have contracts with a unit, but they are not owned by.
The town of Madison does not own the fire.
Yeah. So that's what kind of makes us different from other counties.
And I would definitely echo the caution of overspending, knowing we're hopeful to avoid an EMS tax, but know that so many counties have had to go in that direction. That is a significant concern statewide and something that KDH has subsidized for a very long time for this county and we are contributing now as a county, but only roughly 50% of the cost of, of obviously an essential service. So knowing that this county may potentially have to add and allocate more funds for EMS services, which would come from these public safety dollars, that's another factor that we need to consider in the future.
Right. When I go to conferences, it is, everyone is working towards EMS tax. Everyone is looking at judicial lip tax as well. As we have seen, that's another expense that is probably more than what our property taxes can support in the future.
So what, I know we all knew this was coming, you know, excited to be able to get these dollars certainly, but knew there were options within how these are distributed. What, what comments does council want to, want to add, concerns, supportive statements?
I don't have any comments. I'm just glad that we're able to do it from a public safety tax and I'm glad that we're going to be looking at a different way to disperse those funds in 2025, making sure that they're fair.
And being clear that this total was because the one or two 600 would, would go out now.
Yes.
Yeah.
We would be contacting everyone to come in and then I would have them sign an agreement that this is to be used for fire protection and just for state warrant of accounts purposes.
To addition of money and distribute next year amount to the All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, we got it.
I was going to say, we typically do kind of hold public comment to the end, but, but knowing that your statement would be related to what we're discussing, we are certainly okay with going in sharing now.
Next year, a little bit more or whatever, you know, how it goes up, there's still another significant amount by any, by any stretch of imagination, correct, on the public safety tax.
That's right. It would be, well, it depends on what your operation budget. I would say that $9,000 to Kent is probably a very significant amount. I'm not sure, you know, how everyone's operation budgets are, but hopefully that every year we could go up a few percent to be able to get to a sizable amount. But it is not going to replace your operation. It is only going to supplement.
No, because I know when I did a study a few years ago, and not everybody followed the same because let's, we'll take Brooksburg, they don't, deputy, the smaller fire departments operate within a very small budget. So compared to Madison Township, or you know, with us, the bigger departments, where ours is made is 130,000, they only can spend what they have come in and that's it. It's just, it's cut off. But I know when I done the figures and when IPFA had done their presentation and how much it actually does, that they did, had a person come in and do all that, I was only off by three. So it was 133,000 what it cost to run compared, you compare us to a county unit, a city unit, where a city unit has one truck per station to there, where we run five to six trucks because bumpers, tankers, brush trucks, medical vehicles, all that type of stuff. So I, I think that even though this is a good way to get started, I still think we'll have to look at a local income tax that they, the state had passed that the fire departments can do, or the county has to do in order to adopt it and all that, because I'm telling you right now, we're not drawing them in because who wants to come do a fundraiser? How many people actually go out and help with fundraisers? Anybody in this room? There's two sitting here, one down there. So, you know, we, so, you know, DuPont does it every month. We do it every week. Those do it head and mess because they don't draw in enough money to do that, to even make it worth the time. I think Crockett Ridge made
Deputy does bingo every week.
Yeah, well, yeah, Deputy does too, so in order to stay afloat. But how many people did you burn out doing that? And how many times do we ask the sheriff to have a fish fryer or bingo that's public safety? To raise money to buy his equipment? We don't ask them to do zero because they don't have to because they're public safety. We have the same, you know, as far as law enforcement, but NFPA in the next few years is, but we requiring fire departments to work best like law enforcement because it's getting that dangerous out there. So when you look at that type of picture, this is not a small fire department, plus 140 hours to even get their basic stuff done. So law enforcement goes to police academy, how many weeks is that, Pam?
Quite a few.
Quite a few. We're doing the same amount of weeks on a volunteer basis. So when you look at from that perspective, there's no other public agency in this county, say public safety agency, that's due to except for fire departments. So I think that we'll have to, with the small amounts that is going to increase, I think we'll have to look at the local income tax for fire departments and do that. Because if you take all the county fire departments contracts they get now, it's 70,000, 70 to $100,000 less than the city of Madison volunteer fire departments.
And you have to realize too, that the city fire departments, the city pays for all their gear, all their SCBA, all the appeal, and they also provide some insurance to where the county departments provide, has to provide all that plus the equipment. And with the change of the way the world's evolving now, just to give an example, we, we worked a trade fire the other day and used to, you know, we'd clean our gear every once in a while, now we have, now after every fire call, especially with structured fires, we have to come back to the station and we have to wash our gear. Well, we've only all got one set a piece, so, I mean, and constantly evolving timetable or turntable for fire service, we're doing anywhere from, we could be going to structure fire, ground man rescue, water rescue, you name it, we go to aircraft, a lot more variety of things that we're having to adapt to. We've got the EV vehicles now that you'll be lucky to live three minutes before it catches on fire and burns up and just all those contaminants that we're having to deal with, plus to spend the extra, we're having to spend extra now for just insurance to protect the members that are responding to the calls in case of any health issues, anything like that. So it's a lot broader thing than, and, and I'm not bragging, I've been in the fire service for four years. It's 40 years of involved, of everything involving up to this point and the dangers that we're having to face now and the, and the after effects of working fires or whatever you want to call it. So, and not that I don't appreciate the money that your guys are willing to take and start seeing us get that, but I mean, the cost is for us to buy one air pack almost takes up at 14,000 as example.
So I think when it was originally proposed, we actually used the example of you, it might be small enough to get a radio. It might be one set of turnout gear, but it's a little, it's something to get started.
Right.
And we're hoping that this can only, this is only going to grow from here.
But I think the big thing is to, is to educate more about what all, what all fire departments do. And, and I think that if we educate more and get, to have you understand exactly what we're going through exactly, because right now we're having to sacrifice training, we're having to sacrifice on raising funds to be able to, to be able to move forward with whatever adapting things that we're having to do. We're doing more stuff now than I did four years ago when we were just fighting car fires and house fires and brush fire. I mean, that's way different now. And the expense for that is just keeps going up and up.
I think that it's a, it's a problem that we all see across the board, just not in our county, but it's across the country. We don't have the volunteers, we don't have the money to find a solution for it. So we're trying to work through that until somebody comes up with a solid solution on how to work through this problem. I don't, I'm not even sure that our community is aware that there is an issue with fire departments within our communities that we live in. And I don't know if they appreciate what we do have currently. So we are aware of it. We're trying to do what we can with what we have and trying to support you and we truly appreciate everything that you do. And until we have something better, this is what we've got.
And we definitely hear from other decision makers saying, at some point, we can't put off the discussion any longer of what fire protection in this county could and maybe should look like, potentially a complete restructuring. I had somebody just last week in a meeting saying they've seen counties similar to us that rely on all volunteers move to, you know, a big task force, looking at representatives from various agencies, county, city, municipalities, public safety staff, you know, 911, EMS fire, police in general, kind of pulling together thinking, what can, what could this look like if this structure had to change to, to continue to protect each and every home and, and save dollars, knowing that, you know, we may not be able to operate on complete volunteer work and the mass number of buildings that we operate from. So I, I'm not saying there's a meeting tomorrow that I know of, I just know that we are So I, um, I'm not saying there's a meeting tomorrow that I know of, I just know that we are often, that people are, are, in our community and other communities are saying, at some point, we're going to have to pull it together and, and look at, at restructuring, so to speak, potentially to save money.
My understanding was that the proposal was that for, that the state would allow us to raise the public safety tax or the lit between one to five, no more than five percent, um, and use that for.
It was allocating, whatever our rate was, we would allocate between one and five percent.
To.
To fire.
To fire, before it went to all other units.
Okay.
So that would.
But we bumped, we bumped the lid up a little bit.
We bumped it up a little, but everyone needs to understand our income tax is one of the lowest in the state. And even if we did twenty percent compared to other counties of what we already collect, we're not collecting as much as what these other counties are collecting.
And I will say, I was a little bit shocked by these numbers and I talked to Robert about this, um, a couple of weeks ago because when we had that meeting and Ray and, and Chris was there, when we had the, the president of the Volunteer Fire Association of the State, it, the numbers, we were hearing hundreds of thousands for every percent that you bumped lid up, you'd get like eight hundred thousand or something. I was like, wow, this is, if we just do a three percent, they'll have money. And then I see these numbers, so I was kind of sticker shock. So that, there's just stuff I don't understand about, but I told Robert, I said, I don't like the numbers.
Five percent of the county's allocation.
Our allocation is so small for there.
Right. And when I received that amount in, almost, we, it's, and I just looked at this and I cannot remember off the top of my head, but like the city gets ninety-five thousand, I'm going to say, every month from public safety. And then they pay back the fifty percent for the jail payment. And we originally created this to have enough to make the jail payment and hopefully do some operational expenses. It has been more so that we can make the payment and we do have the availability to do something like this.
Long story short, this is the beginning of the conversation, not the end, as far as our fire services have given these guys support.
Yes, this is just starting.
Thank you, uh, to all in the room that represent our amazing founder of fire drivers across this county. Uh, many thanks. I couldn't get enough of thanks, um, and we'll continue to support you and hope that this can grow, that's for certain. I know that, um, this distributed, distribution list and that, that Heather read, um, for each, um, county and then also city, um, fire department is on, um, our agenda to appropriate tonight on our kind of cheat sheet when we get to our transfers and additional, which is almost next on, on the agenda. There's one, one more thing, we have the seventeen eighty-two discussion listed next on agenda and we'll put them right into those transfers and additional appropriation.
Okay, so seventeen eighty-two, I just wanted to share the exciting information that we had. Our budget was approved and only two funds needed to be reduced. And one was the election budget, which she graciously not only reduced by the three thousand dollars that was required, but an entire salary position. And then our last amount that we had to reduce was, uh, the health department by ten, of just over ten thousand dollars. I have sent Lindsay an email and I have not heard back what line item she wants to take that from, but I have went ahead and sent to the state that we are fine with those changes. Um, I will touch base with Lindsay again tomorrow and hopefully, um, find what line item she wants us to take that ten thousand dollars from. And that the state tells us how much we can budget and it was just over that amount. Everything else was good. Um, so I kind of consider that an awesome budget season, having that low of an amount that we have to cut.
Yeah.
Better than you, we had to cut seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, we had to cut seven hundred thousand before, so thirteen thousand was great.
I'd say who does the council and also to auditor and, and, yeah. Budgeting is, yeah, a stressful process, but get to have all that finished after hours of work and then know that that was the only, those were the only two small changes that were needed and we can work with in those changes. Yeah, much appreciation to Heather and her team. We didn't, we didn't kill each other during budgeting, we survived.
No, we survived. Uh, one last thing on, not on seventeen eighty-two was that I also put BZA appointment, Helen Crone in. Uh, Taylor actually reached out to me today saying that they needed that, his term expires at the end of the year and he is willing to serve another four-year term.
Good. Term would, new term would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
This isn't appointed. Mm-hmm, it is, he is appointed by the council.
Helen Crone, currently serving nicely, and I want to say this is maybe a second term.
This is the second.
Yeah. So we, um, we would entertain a motion to retain and appreciate Mr. Crone's. Serving on the boat is Board of Zoning Appeals, motion by Pam and second by Ray Black. All those in favor? Aye. No opposing sign? We do not each have to sign this, I believe I need to sign it and Heather will sign this off. Send this over to her. Taylor will let him know that we appreciate him, yes, serving one more term. And then, um, I'm going to go to our additional and transfer preparation.
Can I squeeze in something before it? It'll take a second. And I've even mentioned it with Heather, and it's a preliminary discussion. I had a couple of county residents that have had incidents with people going into county cemeteries at night, okay, with dog doors, you know, four-wheelers, you know, that kind of stuff. And, uh, you know, you, you hate to see that kind of stuff, but, uh, they, they asked me, they, they gave me these suggestions and it would be, you know, if we, if we could think about putting a state county green reflector sign wording, the cemetery opened on a desk, then if the county would consider making some ordinance about all terrain vehicles prohibited lest they have legitimate reasons such as mowing or repair to be on property. Now, all this would probably, uh, be as just a sign being put up at these county cemeteries. And I don't think it would run over five hundred dollars. And Heather mentioned that we could ask the cemetery board if they have any money to appropriate to this, maybe, possibly. And I wanted to give the county's blessing before we ask the commissioners and stuff like that, you know, what they think about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's as far as a fee, I don't think there would be a major fee, but I think that that would be something that the commissioners would need to discuss and then bring it to us.
And there's a chance that they may be able to work with in the cemetery board. I can tell you, three cemeteries that I'm in often, all three have a sign already that are open on a desk. Doesn't mean that they all do, I'm sure they don't.
Prohibiting the.
But there's three right away, the three that are not.
The golf carts and sign on the sign.
Yeah, I see they don't have any ATV signage, but they do have an open door desk.
Are they, are they, um, destroying property?
Well, I, I, you know, I, I don't want to say that, I don't want to say that, I just want to say it's kind of disrespectful.
Right.
Perhaps what they're doing, and this is just, just a suggestion, you know.
Maybe riding the roads and stuff.
Right, right, and if we have a sign, at least we have a, you know, it's right there.
Like a trailer, I mean, okay, gotcha.
Right, right. But, you know, if we can move it, we'll.
Then they may not even still be here, I do think, obviously, um, just in always informing the police because it only takes a couple, right? Yeah, it only takes a couple drive-bys to, to, yes, let, they're sort of.
Sometimes it's signed by health officials.
I think that the next step would be going to the commissioners and having them.
I just didn't.
I would agree with that, probably be a small expense, I think that could be in order.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would move, be more than five hundred dollars.
Thanks Gary for bringing that to our attention. Some taxpayers and concerned citizens, we want to make sure we follow up, so we shake that. We have, most everybody should have, I think, our, our little cheat sheet with the, the transfers and then the additional, the transfers are the two thousand five hundred dollars, um, from the election stipend clerk, excuse me, from the third deputy to that required clerk. It's in the legislation that changed in twenty twenty-four, the full-time elected clerk that acts as the election clerk. As we note, um, that Tabitha Blundin, that holds, um, acts on that duty in a general election is paid a twenty-five hundred dollar stipend. Um, and that is included only, um, in future years when the elections are paid. So the transfer is moving from the twelve fifteen dot one one four one seven, um, the third deputy line item, which obviously has, um, a balance in there, moving that to the election stipend clerk fund of the twelve fifteen dot one 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 six one, flat amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. So we would need a motion to accept that transfer.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Gary and a second by Chris. All those in favor? No opposing sign? Pam, was that a?
No, that was, uh, okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
I was just late, I was taking notes.
You're good. Okay, and then the additional on, I'm.
I'm wondering more clarification on that.
Yeah, that would make me a little more information, the highway road repair, a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so it was suggested of our remaining ARPA money that the commissioners would like to allocate a hundred thousand dollars to road repair for the county highway department. Unfortunately, we do not have a contract to hold that money to do next year's road repairs. But what we do have is the ability to appropriate it this year and backdate our correction for road repairs that have already taken place. So then this will increase their cash balance by a hundred thousand dollars.
Good thinking.
Going into next year. Um, I think this is a really good move. This is a fund that has had to do an operational loan last year and this will hopefully keep them from having to do that next year.
Who came up with that idea? Good job.
So I.
We agree, but.
Yeah.
Although we, we, I think we did have it in the list initially.
Yes, it was the list for the next year, but.
Yeah, good job, good job, good job.
At conference, this was a discussion on how to use the ARPA funds and this was one of the suggestions.
Awesome, awesome. Much of a blessing as we sit down, we're all going to be glad when we don't have to say those letters ever again.
When we never say ARPA again.
Yes, no kidding.
Finished from my.
From the government, it'll just become something else.
Something else at that point, yeah. Okay, so this technically would be the additional from nine one one two dot three one zero four five. Highway road repair, an amount of one hundred thousand dollars even. We would need a motion.
I want to get a motion.
Yeah, we're coming from Ray Black, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Dwayne, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposing sign? Thank you. And then technically the, um, remaining, actually, when we go ahead to the resolution seventeen is in that full amount.
A hundred and two thousand.
Yeah, um, so should that, that's.
We need to approve it.
That's not, that would be on the resolution.
It should be on the resolution.
It should be, yes.
So pencil that in, you can pencil it in on there. It would be the same.
Would be a hundred thousand in the one or two, so.
And I forgot the resolution on my cheat sheet.
It's okay, so, um, we're putting these in form, combining those additional resolutions, um, for our monthly record keeping. This would be resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, wrapping up the year, even if it's not what month of the year, but seventeen. This would be one hundred thousand even, um, as we just discussed, the highway road repair and then in addition, that one hundred and two thousand six hundred, which was the total allocated list that was shared for fire department distribution in this going out not next year, going out this calendar year, twenty twenty-four. So that total resolution, number seventeen, would read two hundred and two thousand six hundred dollars. So to approve the resolution, um, do we, can we make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, twenty, or two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen, uh, for a total of two hundred and two thousand six hundred dollars, a hundred thousand for road repair and one hundred and two thousand six hundred dollars for fire departments.
Thank you, Chris and Ray, did I hear a second, okay, sorry, Denning, a second, all those in favor, approval. No opposing sign?
All abstaining, those of conflict.
Okay, thank you, um, action from Ray Black. And I apologize, I have some chicken scratch notes on mine that probably needs a signature. Do you have another clean copy or do I have to send you around one of the house some chicken scratch notes? It's not bad, I just added.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think this is okay. Yeah, I even wrote motion CS and second RD, just that's using my, uh, I apologize, that was my copy. So we'll get that sent around, that's approval, written with signature. Um, and Roy obviously does not have to sign, um, since he abstained for the resolution. Kind of along the line of that, um, one more signature, I guess, motion needed technically, we don't have to sign this one, is in regarding the salary ordinance and then any further discussion, well, we've already received regarding longevity, a proposal for our shares.
We have encumbrance.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We have encumbrance.
That's right, that's right. Um, yeah, we, we want to explain that one there.
So we only do encumbrances in December, the only fund we are doing encumbrances for this year is the things that we have appropriated in ARPA right now, so that we do not have to re-appropriate those. And, um, what we have currently that we have not spent and we are not going to be able to spend by the end of the year is the attendance on demand, um, which is our timekeeping service. That is sixty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and that is actually the implementation, but also the, um, first year of service. The other one is contracts. Just recently, we had allocated and approved twenty thousand dollars for a key fob installation for the courthouse locks and also sixty thousand dollars for animal shelter design. So I'm just asking that we keep that appropriated for twenty twenty-five. I do have the contract for the attendance in hand, the contract for the animal shelter agreement we will have by the next commissioner meeting and then the quote we should have next week as well for the key fob to hold that money.
I mean, this was on the proposed list from the commissioners and we didn't have them ready for the ARPA funds, but as we've stated, this contract had to be in place for us to be able to allocate those dollars by the end of the year. Okay, so we would need a motion to move forward with those three, um, again, coming from the remainder of the ARPA funds. By Ray Denning and a second by. Okay, we have a second by Ray Black. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposing sign? Thank you, I think those are on the deck, I apologize, I missed the encumbrance. The, I, I don't believe we have to read, obviously, every number listed on our updated salary ordinance. I know much work is being put into place with this. This is the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance that we're required to make sure this gets approved by the end of the calendar year. And then in addition, um, discussion and feedback for the. And then in addition, discussion and feedback for the sheriff's department longevity plan with hopeful retention recruitment, always a constant matter with staffing. And that outlines the road officer longevity, the jail longevity, the road officer longevity currently based on staff, the estimation would be $81,000 total to be able to support that matrix of a small second from a two to four year all the way up to 25 plus year road officer employees. And then the jail longevity, the same really year structure breakdown, two to four years, five to nine, et cetera, all the way up 25 to 25 plus. And a little lower compensation for jail longevity in comparison to road officer longevity. That current staff for the jail longevity would equal $16,500 for that total amount. And then in addition, what's been proposed is a sign-on bonus of $2,500 for the sheriff's department not to exceed 10 sign-on bonuses, which we probably will not be looking at in a calendar year. And then this does state payable after X days of employment and I don't think that had come up previously in our discussion, was there a suggestion?
So I know that other, other units, when they do something like this, some people say six months, some people say 90 days. I didn't know if you wanted us to include that language so that we didn't have people signing on and getting 2,500 and working one check and then not.
I took my thought into the sign-on bonuses and I'm not a big favor of the sign-on bonuses at all, period, and I would actually vote against the sign-on bonuses if I could like pull it out. And I would be much more likely to vote yes on a bonus if you would put a long, like a six month.
Yeah, especially if you're.
Because I am not in favor of the sign-on bonus at all, period.
And I think that sign-on bonus should be for a lateral, fully trained officer that you're not going to happen with.
Yes, that's somebody who's already gone through the academy, not a, not a junior.
So we need to put a stipulation on that, you can.
Sheriff's, sheriff's present, president, sorry, and president, you can be president if you want. Are you going to grant, you know, a potential suggested timeline of a six month or are you really pushing and asking for a short timeline?
You could do it that way, I mean, I'm okay with either of your decisions on that. I'm more grateful for the longevity side of it, so we could do. I know when I got hired in Florida, completely different state, I understand, but if you're already certified and they gave you a cash bonus, I noticed the other day that City Madison is now doing it. And theoretically, you do it over a period of time, you don't do it a lump sum. I got mine after I completed FTO after a year of service.
I mentioned a year, that's also an option. Half payable at a six month mark, keeping the stipend amount the same and the other half payable at the year mark.
Some do it at a half upfront, then half after your probationary period, which is a year.
One year for the probation period. And Chris, you've served kind of as a council liaison with the sheriff's department and jail. Do you have any feedback on that specific sign-on bonus?
I mean, we originally discussed, you know, 5,000 just because of how difficult it is to recruit pre-trained existing officers. So we were hoping between a sign-on bonus and the longevity that would help us attract, you know, qualified people who are currently serving in law enforcement. I wouldn't be opposed, 180 days is kind of what I had in mind. I mean, if you have somebody six months in, chances are they're going to stick around for a while. If it was, you know, day one signing bonus, I'd be completely against it. But I'm open to.
Six months, six months.
Sounds good.
In regards to the amount listed in front of us and we've been given this information, obviously it's been in discussion and it was shared via email as well. Any, any discussion, feedback from council regarding the road officer longevity matrix and the jail? Holler and a crance? Sounds like, I think, most agree in support that suggested six month compensation, not the five as Chris originally suggested, but you're able to do the 2,500 sign-on bonus on six months effective employment. Again, this would not be on the jail side, but on the specific core merit.
And that was for certified, I want to correct.
Correct, and technically, I was going to say that technically is not worded this particular.
So. Because I did not know the specifics on this, it is not on the salary ordinance and any type of compensation would have to be added to the salary ordinance, so it will be in the January revisions. I did go ahead and list the longevity amounts. Brittany put those in as this is reflected on. So if you accept the salary ordinance, then you are accepting the different longevity.
Okay. And then questions for Ben? Sheriff Flynn, sorry.
Well, I overheard your comment about the cemeteries.
Yeah.
If you had specifics, locations, let me know and I'll try to get some extra patrol.
Okay, I.
In the meantime.
Yeah, I will be back.
Okay.
Okay.
How's the heat in the jail?
Better, but it's warmer outside. Now it's going good.
So far it will be.
Not going to look.
So we would, we would need.
Generally, you're.
Yes, then.
They, I didn't look today, they're about 180s, but 190.
So we would entertain a motion to approve the drafted 2025 salary ordinance knowing that the additional changes to both the clerk and the auditor's office and the additional sign-on bonus for the sheriff's department would be added and changed for a January revision. Come in front of us one more time at our January meeting. But we need to go ahead and get the current salary ordinance that has been proposed passed for this calendar year.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Dwayne.
I'm sorry.
I said you were quick, but I'll make a second on that salary.
Second by Tim Crozier, all those in favor of approval of the salary ordinance, say hi. As a opposing sign? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, I do have one other thing. I will be doing the, normally do a meeting guideline, be thinking if there's anything with the meeting, current meeting guideline that you would like changed for 2025 and if there is, send me those ideas so that I can get that information put in. And then we will do appointments as well, so be thinking appointments for the January meeting.
Yes, or I just had a discussion yesterday with some community asking about the tourism board and my appointments and community representation. One more small change that we discussed. At the event, after you and I were training together earlier this year, we talked about how some counties had a great suggestion of adding in. We always like to have some details from the county department heads when they turn in regardless of timing during the year, request for changes and additional, sometimes they write in a total dollar amount and we get no additional information. And we're looking up department budget codes and line items and there's no explanation. And I had shared Heather with you a couple suggestions of kind of also minding then, you know, have, is there an opportunity within your budget for this to be, you know, a transfer versus an additional corporation? And then in addition, if this exceeds your allocated budget amount, could you, have you met with your council liaison about this to, you know, inquire about possible, you know, creative changes? I just think those are good things to add on to that sheet that department heads could be filling out.
I will create an additional questionnaire.
Okay.
So that will be their first step of an additional.
Hopefully they're filling those in with details when those come in front of us. 2025, that's hard to say that, 2025, wow. All right, any additional public comment? You've got your cover stuck with you.
It's not going to be that long. As your county's representative on the regional development authority, I thought I should give you an update. Fortunately for all of us, thanks to Mr. Demery and the Massacreure, there are two articles in today's paper and as usual, they are accurate. So there's a lot of good information there, thanks. So don't repeat that. I do want to add a little additional context for you because this is a significant milestone, if you will. And there's very good news here, there's always one cautionary note. As a young farm laborer on our farm, my grandfather Shaw once warned me about the fact that after a hard day of work putting in hay in the unexpected rain and the heat, that I was prematurely celebrating because I hadn't been handed cash, just a check and that I wouldn't, shouldn't celebrate until the check actually cleared. So with that, there's one more step in the process and that's mentioned in the article as well. But I do want to speak briefly about the county project. There are two significant city projects also covered in this article and which were covered in our meeting on Friday. And in this case, I think with the, what I consider to be really creation of a regional park by adding full hookup, high-quality camps, campground near Kruger Lake with access there to 421 in that beautiful land. I think when all is said and done, some year down the road, maybe at a mile marker in years that not yet cleared us, I believe that with continued good planning, community input, solid execution and careful contract management, which is demonstrated, I think, with the, with the new jail. When we look back, except from several years down the road, that this project will end up being one of the most beneficial and consequential non-infrastructure county projects in my adult lifetime. And I do not say that lightly. Why? I think here we're talking about much more than just recreation and while that's a vital element of what sets us apart here in Jefferson County as a location with truly exceptional natural assets, this visionary project, and I really believe it's visionary, near Kruger Lake on spectacular forested land that the county owns, is one that will also enhance education, it'll enhance economic growth over time, including through tourism. It'll even, I believe, over time, enhance workforce attraction and retention and ultimately even new private investment as people choose to spend their dollars here and to move to our region to the excellent quality of life and place that we enjoy here in Jefferson County and elsewhere in our five county region. This is a regional responsibility and we are significant in our contributions to the benefit of the region. The competition this time around in Ready 2.0, sort of the competition for available grant dollar was fierce. It was very competitive, in part because there were far more high-quality projects this time. And the total requests for those project applications were very large numbers. And this happened really, I think, because people witnessed the success of, and of projects that were funded in the first round and they could see tangible results and there will be more as time passes. So for that reason, and also the chance to learn more about the process, more people applied. And so very competitive, very, very competitive. Now, sometimes visionary projects like this one that are multifaceted, include multiple phases, require some additional explanation and education so that folks have a chance to see the full picture. And I think that was the case so far in this process with the board and with the IDC. But here tonight, I'm really here to thank the commissioners and the county for putting forward this imaginative proposal and we remain ready and available to address any future requests for additional information from the IDC as the state does its regular due diligence and final compliance work. So that's my report from the field. Try not to bother you unless there's something significant, I thank this well, Chris. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, thank you for serving on that authority commission, yeah, exciting.
It's an honor, I appreciate it.
I mean, the amount of work, I mean, because this go-around was far different than the Ready one because these were state dollars and the state was far more interested in how these were spent and the continued kind of negotiation that was needed that Kevin and the group had to do to get, get their projects. Because the state pretty much, I think, at one point said, we're going to pick the projects and the RDA said, I don't think so. So there was a fair amount of discussion along those lines, so.
I'll, I'll add that it has been a good process. It's one where we have, you know, leadership partners in Indianapolis and we respect that role that they have and their responsibility for the wise spending of state funds and across all the regions. I mean, it's something to track projects across five county region, but when you're tracking them across all the counties and so many regions and handling things differently from one another, I have great respect for the people we've been working with at the IDC and look forward to continuing to work with them.
I'm just really proud of the amount of dollars that will be coming into Jefferson County itself, city and county, and really proud about the Kruger Lake improvement and what potentially lies out there. I mean, I mean, the amount that was gifted or not gifted or granted to that project itself is just miniscule of what can be potentially out there. And the commissioners, when they presented it to the initial presentation, I could see your, the board that you sit on, they were like, they wanted to know more because they knew immediately that was something that they were going to run with and I knew that they were going to award money to that project, you could just tell right away. So I was so excited.
I think one thing that's interesting here is that it works well with Madison's tourism growth. There's a shortage of beds, as you know, we don't have enough hotel spaces. And frankly, a lot of people come to festivals and want to do other things in this area like the idea of being able to stay in their RV or camp in another way. So it provides an alternative that's badly needed. And we're about attracting people who want to come back, of course, spend their money and also look at us here in this county and in our neighboring counties as a place maybe they want to move or retire or encourage others to do so. That benefits us, it benefits our businesses here. We're competing for talented workforce and so forth. In this case, it's not just about that though, in my, in my view, you know, the types of recreation that are envisioned in this proposal going forward, of course, with community input, with guidance from county officials and so forth. I mean, I can, I can see looking back on this and see all kinds of activities there. Some notes I typed up, including, you know, obviously hiking, fishing, nature exhibits, pickleball, grizzly golf, radio control boat racing is already there. I can see in my mind's eye, school bus is coming, kids coming, 4H coming, you know, even let's say a biology student at Hanover who's a real star and he or she is out there actually doing research on county property, I think. There's a lot of potential, you know, look forward to seeing it.
We heard right away that campgrounds in this very fill up a year in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah, we knew right away, we had a great winner of an idea when they talked about campground out at JPG. I just got my reminder to rejoin Big Oaks, which is a huge piece of the success out there. So if you're not a member of the Jefferson County Big Oaks Wildlife Refuge, yeah, they always can use support, volunteer hands and resources, so. Yeah, a lot of amazing things, offer a chance on that property. Thanks to all who have put in a lot of work for, hopefully, these ready funding opportunities. Any other discussion from council? Let's not forget.
Not, not, not a.
How long is the commissioners' report?
No, no, I, so, I mean, he's got to come in here. So Brandon, the 911 was audited in October?
Yes, October.
So with IDAX and, I didn't see any of these acronyms, but the thing that kind of.
But the, the thing that kind of, so they had some, it's more of a concern. The, the 911 management board has to be populated differently. It has to have 51% law enforcement on the, on the board. So, uh, we've tried to start thinking about how we wanna get there. You could just try to add more, you know, so that would be with the five current members, you'd have to have six law enforcement folks. Talking to Hanover, they said that is our entire department and not sure we can get that. So we thought, well, maybe we could reduce some of those that aren't law enforcement and then bring on, um, we could get one from each. And we're probably gonna look to see, I don't know if you've had us talk to him, but talk to the sheriff to see if, because he is not, Brandon would not be considered a law enforcement. But if he was a special deputy, then he probably could be. So Pat's working on trying to come up with a new, um, interlocal agreement to kind of keep each group involved, the town of, uh, Hanover, City of Madison and us still. I don't know, I thought we'd probably have to reduce one of the county appointments just to make it, to make that number easier, trying to work with it and so, uh, but Pat's working on that. But just to give you a heads up, and the reason it's interesting, because he, I don't know, I'm gonna time he asks this guy. So why was this not an issue the other times we've been audited? Well, come to find out, the FBI will be in Indiana in April. And so because of federal dollars and so as the pieces went together, the FBI will probably pay us a visit. And so we need to be in line with, with those things and so.
And this is not obviously the MA board, this is the 911 board. And it has to be 50 plus percent law enforcement representation. And our current council representatives, both Pam and Ray?
No, no, just Ray.
Just Ray. Our councilor serving on the 911 board.
Yeah, and so the, um, I'm just lost it.
So the current makeup is the mayor.
Well, uh, there's two from the city, one from Hanover and then two from the county. That's the five. I think whoever, you know, one from the city, one from the town, one from the county, and then four, three officers, and then we get Brandon deputy, then we can get to the seven and have that split. That's correct. So, I mean, you know, the things that, that are at stake are, can they issue? You, you're able to explain all this.
Sure. Um, so since we're a criminal justice agency as a regional dispatch center performing criminal justice functions, which is running license plates, running people, entering things stolen. In order to retain our ability to do those things, our board has to be made up 51% law enforcement.
So those are the things.
Which makes sense.
Right. I mean, so just to give you a heads up, we met last night trying to see how we would work that out. Initially, we thought about trying to do six officers to have, to make that, but then when Triva looked at me like, well, that's our entire force there. Probably not gonna be able to get both of them at one time, so.
I'm sure you could get city officers and county officers, you know.
Sure. And so, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll be looking at our board appointments in January. So there is only one county representative. If it's determined, yeah, that's a commissioner, council, one or the other, instead of both. We would all could make a decision then at that point. Thank you.
Commissioner Bremer. One thing I wanted to revisit, a couple of years ago, we put together a letter from the county, the council, the commissioners, and I think maybe the city may have signed on to it as well, requesting the state look at increasing, uh, the width of the roadway from the junction of, um, 62, there's top of Hanover Hill to Charleston, to put it, to make that a three to five. If possible, like to revive that in January and resend that letter to the state. But have some good conversations with our, uh, our members at the State House to, to get that pushed through. Because the cost that he's been done, uh, the cost came in, I believe, is about 50% of the cost of doing 256. And it makes far more sense to connect Jefferson County with River Ridge. You know, 264, 265, 71, 65, 64. It just, that's the, that's the future is that end of the county being connected. So I'd like to revisit that and get, um, get that back on the radar.
It seems like, um, our representative, state representative was really at the time, was really on board with that. I mean, Alex could really.
Yeah, I would think Chris Gardner would be another one since he's not really, but he's part of the southern part of this. I think if you do a piece of meal, work your way up, like they kind of started, but just continue it.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else from council or Dave? All right, our, our next meeting actually will be the second Tuesday in January, which is. The, yeah, 10th. The 14th. Actually, yeah, I guess, um, yeah, that is later than, yeah. January 14th, first of all, is on.
At 5:30.
At 5:30.
Yes, meetings next year are moving to 5:30, so five.
Let's see, we got our Jefferson County Highway Superintendent's first meeting, council meeting.
Welcome.
Hello everyone, I'm trying to hide. They came in, it's the hall. Yeah, we're in the hall just a little bit. Yep, nice to meet everybody. I just wanted to stop by.
You come in and get a hundred grand.
Yeah.
They'll have to attract us, you know, so.
Every month.
Yeah.
We don't see it, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Like I said, I just wanted to come in and introduce myself, kinda put faces with names, you know. I'm not familiar with everybody. A few of you I'm familiar with, some I lived close to previously. So like I said, just kinda getting a feel for everything, trying to learn. So trying to stay out of, outside, out of mind.
Congratulations on the.
Well, thank you. Like everybody said, you know, big shoes to fill. Of course, like I told them, I can't walk in someone's shoes, so maybe we can get in their steps. Bear with us for a little bit, we got a learning curve. Mr. Bremer here, Mr. Little and, and Ron Lee there, they've been super supportive of us and, you know, helping us along the way. So like I say, we're gonna have a little growing paint here for a minute.
Doing great.
We'll get her figured out, so I just appreciate everybody.
We appreciate you.
So thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Some, some of the council will be willing to help you fill in potholes next year just to, just to.
We're taking all, any and all of them here.
Dwayne, you'll be the first to go.
Yeah, and don't worry, we got snow removal coming up too.
Dwayne, there you go.
There you go, Dwayne.
Yes.
I mean, if Ben can just deputize me, I'll, I'll have the whole, I'll have the whole thing, see?
Deputize.
If I can start packing heat, I'll do it.
We would need a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Sound motion by Ray Black? If we need a second, we got that from Pam. All right, everybody have a Merry Christmas, joyous holiday season. Be safe and we'll see everybody in January.